Welcome to the Olathe Board of Education Meeting.
At Pleasant Ridge, we do our best to show our historic performance on the standard of excellence on the Kansas Assessment.
Go Patriots!
Welcome, all of you, to our regular May 4th Board of Education meeting. Thank you so much for being here. Mrs. Carpenter, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Ashling, here. Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Drummond?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
Thank you very much. As tradition has it, we will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Dr. Hall has some distinguished guests here for us?
Yes, would the students please come forward to lead us in the pledge? We have two students this evening here from Heatherstone Elementary School. They're sixth graders, and after they lead us in our pledge of allegiance, is how we open every meeting, I'll introduce them and have them introduce their guests.
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get right between you girls here. Okay, I have a few little notes about them, and on my right is Ellie, and is that Lagerquist? Is that how you say your name? Lagerquist, and she's the daughter of Kayla and Steve, and you want to have your parents stand up? And then you have a, I think you have a sibling here, who's that?
Carrie.
Your sister? That was great. And to my left is Ellie Meyer, and she's the oldest of three children of Mike and Joanna Meyer. Do you have parents and family with you?
Yeah.
You want to have them stand?
That's my mom, there. And then that's my sister.
What's her name?
Abby.
Abby, okay, we're glad to have you. In Ellie's case, she enjoys singing, dancing, and basketball, and playing the piano and flute. She received the highest rating of Superior both times she has played at the National Federation of Music Clubs and competition on the piano. And Ellie enjoys playing in the band, and she sings also in the special course at Heatherstone. So we've been really pleased to have both of them here tonight. We have, I believe, the principal, Ken Roberts, from Heatherstone's with us, and Gwen Aider, their teacher. So appreciate everyone here, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. Dr. Hall, you would lead us through an overview of the meeting, please?
Yes, first of all, we will begin the evening tonight with a series of presentations. We're going to lead off with a presentation from an important committee that's been working this year to promote nutrition and wellness. This council will be presenting the work that they've done to the board. Following that, we should have a presentation on the Miracle League, and the Miracle League is an opportunity to bring a special athletic field to Olathe for children that might be able to enjoy baseball for the first time in their life. Following that, there will be a presentation on a proposed international language program at the elementary level. This is a proposal tonight, it is not for board action this evening, and it will be an opportunity for the board to hear about the proposal, ask questions, and for staff to provide any additional information or modifications as needed. We also are going to introduce tonight a concept called AVID. AVID is advancement via individual determination, and it's an opportunity to put in place through Kaufman grant funding programs that will help prepare students for advanced placement classes and accelerated classes at the high school level. And then, of course, we will have our legislative update from Dr. George. And then, just a brief, and it may have to be later in the program, a brief update on our Bond Task Force. We've had nearly eighty people in this room this morning from our community and staff continuing to work very hard to give a great and thorough study to the needs of this district as we prepare for the future. At about 6:30 to 6:45, we'll have a comfort break, and during that time, there's also a faculty art exhibition reception. And again, we maintain art in this facility year-round, from elementary to senior high, as well as our faculty artists. Then we will have our May recognitions and awards, and there's quite a length here of May recognitions and awards, and so this is that time of year that is very celebratory in our school district. At 7:10, we will take public comments tonight. Following public comments, the board will take action on consent agenda items, and the board president will identify those items. At the time, board members will have received information on this prior to the meeting, have the opportunity to approve as a group, or to discuss any item or vote on any item separately. Following consent agenda items, we have a series of future action items that the board is getting information about, and that includes some special meeting dates that we may need for purposes of negotiations, and also fiscal year special meeting dates and organizational meeting in July. There'll be a report on our broker consultant process, another budget development update report, and then an opportunity to read a little bit about our Sister City delegation, and student trips, technology bids, and curriculum and instructional materials, and a brief facility usage update. In addition, there's a written report on the Kaufman Foundation Math and Science Initiative. The school district was awarded one and a half million dollars from Kaufman to support math and science for three years, and report on our employee climate survey, which really demonstrated a high level of satisfaction of our employees. And then, following the board meeting, the board will recess to executive session to discuss non-elected personnel, attorney-client privilege, and to discuss negotiations of all matters provided for within the statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, appreciate that overview. I think we'll move right on to the agenda then. The informational items, these are presentations of reports that will be preceded with a brief introductory comments and remarks. In order to address a number of pertinent issues, reports will generally not exceed about ten minutes to give the board an opportunity to ask questions. So we'll begin with the first report, Nutrition and Wellness Council Policies. Dr. Hall, and I think Mr. Parker's been working on this as well, so we'll have some discussion about this.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Drummond, and good evening. Tonight, we are presenting an overview of the recommended nutrition and wellness program for the Olathe School District that will meet and/or exceed the requirements of the new federal and state legislation. The first order of business for this council was to ask and answer the question, what is our purpose? As you can see by this slide, this is the purpose statement of the Nutrition and Wellness Council. We will assist the district in implementing healthy food and wellness choices in our schools by advising, coordinating, monitoring the guidelines, policies, and procedures necessary to meet and/or exceed the regulations as established by the state and federal legislation. In addition, we wanted to establish the mission statement that would speak to the overarching need that this issue presents, not just to the schools, but to our society in general. In the mission statement, as you can see, the Olathe District Schools in partnership with family and community are committed to providing a healthy school environment that promotes and enhances student well-being and the ability to learn. The Nutrition and Wellness Council actually consists of twenty-seven different people, and the council, as you can see, is made up of parents, students, a board member, building staff, and district administrative staff. The Nutrition and Wellness Council actually started two years ago as the district took a closer look at how to assist students and staff with healthier food choices from the vending machines and the à la carte food lunch area. Recent legislation has greatly expanded the scope of this council. Tonight, five council members, plus our very own Harlan Parker, will overview the recommended program for the district as it considers these policies and recommendations.
Our children's health is at risk. Nine million American children are overweight, and that is triple the number in 1980.
Of overweight five-to-ten-year-olds, sixty-one percent have at least one risk factor for heart disease.
Only two percent of school-aged children consume the recommended number, daily number of servings, from all five major food groups.
The average child gets less than fifteen minutes of vigorous activity a day.
And the average U.S. child spends twenty percent of his or her waking time watching television.
These compelling facts helped us to focus on what would be best for students. When students' health needs are met, they perform better academically.
And there is a positive link between physical activity and increasing test scores.
There is a relationship between academic achievement and the fitness levels of students.
And statistics show overweight children miss one more day of school per month than their like-age peers.
Overweight children are more likely to be bullied or become bullies. Nutrition and Wellness Council had five goal areas to consider. Those are nutrition, nutrition education, physical activity, building-based activity, and finally, the implementation and monitoring plan.
Excuse me, would you mind introducing yourselves? That would be...
We will.
My name's Laura Taylor-Wiltinger. I'm a graduate of Olathe North and a former Oregon Trail junior high school teacher. Currently, I'm at home with my three children, and my oldest is in first grade at Prairie Center. This evening, I will be speaking about nutrition in the Olathe schools, which is basically what the students are eating during the school day. The goal statement for nutrition is, all foods available on school property and at school-sponsored activities during the school day, including extended learning programs, should meet or exceed the Olathe District nutrition standards. Food should be made available with consideration toward variety, appeal, taste, safety, packaging, cost, and age-appropriateness to promote healthy food choices. Beyond the goal statement, we followed the format of the Kansas State Nutrition Policies to create our objectives. Based on my experience in school and teaching school in the Olathe School District, quite frankly, I've been concerned about what kids are eating. Fortunately, over the course of this year, I have learned that we are already doing some wonderful things to make healthy foods available at school. Some highlights are, whole grains are offered daily at breakfast and frequently at lunch; overall nutrient content is calculated when making food and beverage choices for the school breakfast program and national school lunch program; three different fruits and/or vegetables are offered at lunch daily; students receive one entree with their purchased lunch, but they have unlimited access to fruits and vegetables; students are encouraged to carry individual water bottles during the school day. Beyond what we are already doing, we would like to continue to offer more healthful choices. Specifically, during the 2006-2007 school year, healthful beverage choices will increase in vending machines, so that water, milk, and juice account for fifty percent of total beverages offered. In addition, fifty percent of all vended and à la carte foods will be foods lower in fat and sugar. Finally, in the classroom, staff will be encouraged to use non-food rewards. To assist with that, a list of recommended snacks and alternative non-food rewards will be provided to teachers. Our major recommendations for action beyond the 2006-2007 school year include gathering student input before making major changes in the areas of vended and à la carte foods and beverages; putting vending machines, which are currently governed by individual schools, under a common district overseer; and finally, implementing a communications plan to make students, parents, and community aware of our progressive action in the area of nutrition at school. Making healthier foods available at school is a huge piece of the puzzle, but kids need to learn how to make healthier choices on their own. To that end, our next presenter will talk about nutrition education.
Good evening. My name is Robyn Stewie, and I'm a parent member on the council and a registered dietitian. The nutrition education goal statement is that all students in grades pre-K through twelve will learn the principles of nutrition, which are integrated into classroom instruction, cafeteria settings, and other school-based activities, in order to positively influence and support lifelong healthy eating habits. Students and their families will be provided with information about how to make healthful food choices. The primary objective is that all students will have the opportunity to participate in classroom learning experiences that support healthful eating habits. Five hours of classroom nutrition education annually will be taught in grades pre-K through six, in health class in grades seven and ten, and through elective courses in grades eight, nine, eleven, and twelve. The nutrition principles learned in the classroom will be reinforced through nutrition displays, such as posters, in the cafeteria and vending areas. Teachers will be encouraged to have their classes participate in at least one nutrition-centered event, and families will be provided with nutrition information and encouraged to promote healthy eating habits at home. Teaching our students the skills to make healthy choices and providing them with the opportunity to use these skills will instill and encourage healthy habits for a lifetime.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Limkeman. I'm a physical education teacher and health teacher, and I'm also the facilitator for sports medicine and athletic training program at Olathe North High School. Physical activity, as we all know, is imperative to the health of our children. We have five objectives under our area. The goal statement for our area, all students pre-K through twelve, including those with disabilities, special healthcare needs, and in alternative education settings, will be encouraged to engage in at least one hour of moderate to vigorous physical activity every day at school, home, and/or in recreational settings. Students and their families will be provided with information needed to maintain lifetime fitness and wellness. Our first objective, students will have opportunities to participate in physical education at all grade levels. That is a current practice in Olathe District, and we are doing that now. Fifty percent of class time spent in moderate to vigorous physical activity is imperative. Encourage students to adopt a physically active lifestyle, and we will encourage pre- and post-testing for grade levels four through twelve to see how we incorporate our curriculum into that plan. The second one will be, students will be physically active during elementary recess time. K through five elementary students have twenty minutes of supervised recess, and we are encouraging moderate to vigorous physical activity during that time. Also, physical education and recess should never be withheld as a punishment. Next objective states that opportunities for physical activity will be regularly incorporated into the school day, and this means that we would discourage any long period of time of inactivity during the school day where the students aren't moving. The next one states that students will be provided opportunities for physical activity both before and after school, and we would like to offer a range of activities to meet all students' needs and ability levels. We also would like after-school enrichment programs that will be encouraged and provide moderate and vigorous physical activity during that time as well. Our last objective states that families will be provided with information to incorporate physical activity into their lifestyles.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Gilmore. I'm the coordinator of health services for the district. I'm also a registered nurse. And my topic to discuss with you is the fourth area, building-based activity. State Department of Education provided a rubric to us, and that was a tool we used to develop each of these areas, and so that tool was also used for this area. The main premise for this area is that for schools to be aware of additional activities we can do beyond nutrition, what the students are eating at breakfast and lunch, what nutrition education we are providing, and what physical education and physical activity we are providing. The objective, or the goal statement for this area are, all buildings will provide an environment conducive to healthy eating and physical activity. There are five major goals for this section. Four of those goals you find on this PowerPoint slide. The first one deals with fundraising activities, so let's see, that's an example of an additional activity, an other building-based activity. We know that food items are often sold for fundraising. We also realize that fundraising is very important to many of our programs. So the Nutrition and Wellness Council will identify and encourage healthful food choices for fundraising. Additionally, fundraising activities that promote physical activity will be encouraged, such as jog-a-thons, walk-a-thons, jump roping. Employee wellness is a wonderful example of another school-based activity. We are fortunate and proud to have a comprehensive employee wellness program already in place to support this second objective, but we plan to have a renewed emphasis on nutrition and physical activity for our employees. While the focus of this second objective appears to be employees, students benefit through positive modeling. Objective three, use of district facilities for wellness activities, again, is a continuation of current practices available through our building rental program. The fourth objective acknowledges that concerns with safety have had an impact on physical activity. Increasing awareness of safety principles, promoting available safety programs such as the McGruff Houses and McGruff Trucks, and engaging parents to partner with schools in planning safe routes to school will hopefully encourage more students to walk to and from school. Key to the entire nutrition and wellness program is the fifth and last objective for this session, which will be highlighted by our next presenter.
Hi, I'm Megan Guile. I will soon be a graduating senior from Olathe South, ten days, ten days. My future plans are, I'll be going to K-State, and my major will be nutritional sciences. What Cindy was talking about, our final objective would be the marketing and promotional plan. Right now, we've been enlisting the help of the Twenty-First Century E-Communication Program over at Olathe North. Mary Alcoz has been helping us out a lot. They've been creating flyers, throwing ideas for a slogan, and like that type of thing. We also want to have community relations help us assist with the creation and promotion of the materials. These visual pieces will be given to each school to promote nutrition and wellness. They'll be placed in the cafeteria and the vending areas. We also like to create a section of the district website to promote nutrition and wellness, form local community partnerships to assist in the promotion of nutrition and wellness. And also, we really want to give out surveys to students, getting their input on how they want nutrition and wellness in the district to be. Then our final one would be implementing and moderating plan. The goal statement is, the Nutrition and Wellness Council will use the following key elements to monitor and evaluate the successful implementation of the goal areas and objectives of the nutrition and wellness policies. The objectives are as follows: identify persons responsible for each goal area; establish baseline data for each goal area and objectives; identify and form community partnerships that will assist in implementation of goal areas; monitor implementation and acceptance of these goal areas; identify barriers of each goal areas; and identify benefits of each goal areas; and then use data to analyze from each goal area to ensure implementation and continuous improvement.
The focus of our work this year has been to get us to the starting line for the Nutrition and Wellness Program that has been presented to you. This has been a thoughtful and comprehensive plan, which we will approach and hopefully lay the foundation that should make a difference in healthy lifestyles and choices for our children in the future. Next month, we will recommend to you that you adopt a policy that will meet or exceed the regulations and requirements as adopted by the state and federal legislation. And at this particular time, we will ask Mr. Harlan Parker to come and provide us some concluding comments, and after Mr. Parker's comments, we will stand for questions or issues. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Dr. Harlan Parker. Megan, would you come here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you like the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Megan. And I was standing in line there, and the thought hit me, and I'm embarrassed to tell you this, that my comments are not on PowerPoint, because I didn't invite Megan over to do it for me, because I don't know how. Thank you. Seven months ago, actually, six months ago, in September, we began. We met in September, got organized, and started in September. Keep in mind that we had the holidays to deal with, but so, this is the work of seven months, when we began the work with this council, even though we've been working on nutrition and wellness in the district for the last two years, this council really began the work which you see this evening six months ago. A tremendous amount of time and work has been expended in developing the policy that you see tonight. This is a compilation of best practices. We have attended workshops, we have attended seminars, we have looked at data and research that's been collected from numerous school district and wellness organizations throughout the country. Development of the policy has been a real team effort. Earlier, Dr. Hall mentioned the twenty-seven people that worked to formulate the policy. We have been, and I think you have been provided a list of those twenty-seven individuals who participated in this evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Hall for his leadership and his patience in building a cohesive team that allowed us to work cooperatively in getting this accomplished. When we met in September, I was, this is complex, it's a big issue, a lot of issues here. And on behalf of the board, I would like to express our appreciation to the parent volunteers that have done, so he's served, and will continue to serve on the council in the future. We are honored by their willingness to be an integral part of this process, and we're also appreciative of the participation words provided by our student volunteers, and I'd like to ask our parent and student volunteers that are here to be recognized that worked on the council. I know we have the presenters, I'm not sure anybody else. How about some appreciation for our parents? Thank you. Development of the policy would not have been possible without the energy, passion, and creativity of the seventeen staff members that brought work to the council. As we worked together, I was continually impressed with the manner in which our staff worked together in a collaborative effort to develop a policy that will make a difference in the health and academic success of all our children. I also believe that the district's implementation of our goals and objectives will ultimately have a positive effect on the wellness and quality of life we experience in our entire community. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to express my appreciation to our professional staff that worked so long and hard in developing our policy. Finally, as we consider the adoption of our health and nutrition policy, I'm reminded of the words of Winston Churchill spoke on November 10, 1942. Now, this is not the end. It is not even the beginning of the end, but it is perhaps the end of the beginning. In other words, the real work starts now. We are now at the beginning, the beginning of the implementation of our objectives and monitoring our goals. Thanks.
First of all, on the behalf of the board, I'd like to echo Mr. Parker's comments to the staff and to the parents for an exhaustive study, a lot of work, tremendous energy poured into this, very, very important topic to us. But I'd also like to thank Mr. Parker for his energy. He's kept us up to date with reports and discussions, and it's really been an honor to see everybody come together and work in a very constructive way, so we appreciate that. So thank you so much. Questions, comments from the board? I have a comment, but I'll wait to the very end. Poland?
I just, you know, the time you put in, I'd just like to express my appreciation also. The only thing I see about this, though, is it's going to force us adults to set a pretty darned good example, which means I'm going to have to break a lot of my habits, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Other comments?
I would echo the comments that have been made. I really do appreciate the time that you put into this effort, because I think it's extremely important, and like Mr. Poland, I'm going to have to break some bad habits. But one of the comments that I would add to this is, I think it's an extraordinary suggestion that our fundraising activities center around some type of physical activity. I've participated in some of those outside of the school district, and not only is it a great way to raise money, it's a good activity, and you meet so many wonderful people and build a lot of camaraderie through those, so I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Just one final comment, or another comment, and that is that, if I remember, just the outline of the State Department and the recommendations that they made, you've gone far beyond what the recommendations of the State Department were, and truly looked at impacting students long-term. And I think you didn't just look at students, but you also looked at adults and how adults might model. You're doing that modeling tonight because your representation is a broad representation of people on the committee that will help to carry this forward, so that also needs to be commended. Sometimes, in the busyness of trying to work at meeting all the needs of education in the variety of different areas, we like to say it's done, and you went far beyond that, that it wasn't just done, but it was done far beyond what the expectations, I think, of the State Department were.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Again, thank you so much for your hard work, and Cindy, if you'd stay a second, because I want to make a few comments, and I want to have you help me make those comments. Rest you, thanks so much, we appreciate it. As sort of an addendum to this report, I have been brought into some work just very recently, just in the last few days, and Cindy's been involved in that as well. As you may or may not know, the city of Olathe is working on a Clean Air Ordinance. They'll be having a study session on May 23 to entertain this ordinance and take public comments, and my thought to this board and this community is that, you know, given what I've heard tonight, given some statements out of our purpose statement and mission statement that say wellness choices in our schools, and talk about a partnership between the family and the community, it seems to me that if the board is comfortable, and that's for the board to decide, it would seem to me that perhaps for us to throw some... of our support toward an ordinance in our city that would make our city a model city in terms of clean air ordinance, I would like you to entertain that and just take a moment here to get your thoughts and ideas and feelings about that. It's a very complicated subject, and it's politically charged in some respects, but as I've read through a whole bunch of literature in the last 10 days, there's no question in my mind, it's a very positive step forward for the city, but I also think very dearly about the school district, the positive role models of a clean air city, the challenges that our youth have and our children have to live a life of clean air. I think it's just, would be very behooving on our part to support the city council as they go through this politically charged issue. Cindy, I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to make about the one meeting we were in together and...
One thing that struck me when we had the meeting to discuss it was that we always mentioned that Olathe is a young, average-age population, and secondhand smoke is so damaging to us, particularly in our youth. 12% of our students have asthma, and they probably even have more susceptibility to suffering effects. This is another opportunity for the city of Olathe to be a leader in Johnson County and take this step forward, and that's what they're asking us to consider partnering in that effort by endorsing.
Thank you very much. So comments or thoughts from the board? I will be going to the study session and giving my personal testimony about a clean air ordinance. I would be glad to represent the board or not represent the board, whatever your comfort level is in that. I know this is coming up very quickly. I've just been made aware of this in the last few days, so it doesn't give you a lot of time to think about it, but opportunity is there if we feel like we want to take advantage of it, so.
You know, obviously, I feel very strongly about this. I've spent a great deal of time over the last two years trying to understand the importance, and understanding the importance of nutrition and wellness. What really tricked us for me, several years ago, the foundation, we had a breakfast, and Mr. Bowser, the executive director of Blue Cross Blue Shield, spoke to us. And at that time, he gave us some startling statistics about obesity and diabetes, especially in the Kansas City area. Our quality of life in Kansas City is significantly below the national average, and that's what kind of caused me to be concerned about this and spend so much of time and a district's time in this area, so because it is so important to us and our future. That being said, I think we could be supportive of an ordinance that, albeit there are certainly many, many, many ramifications and consequences and things that need to be considered a part of that, and we have to be mindful of establishments that may desire that or be desirous of needing that for their clientele, and so, you know, that's something for the city council to decide, but certainly would have to take a measured approach, I would think, and a balanced approach of some sort. And I'm sure that the city council will do that, but for us to say that, certainly, I think what we've talked about this evening, and if we choose to adopt this in June, then we would be on record for nutrition and wellness. And I think it's been a policy in the district of not using tobacco on district property for a number of years as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Other thoughts or comments?
I don't know all the details of this ordinance issue, but, you know, of concern to me would, and it is a complex issue from what I understand, it sounds wonderful on its face, but one of my concerns would be is the ordinance supporting telling private businesses what they can and can't do in terms of allowing smoking or not allowing smoking, and, you know, my personal perspective is I don't know that that's the government's business to allow that. So I would be concerned if that's part of this ordinance, if we're being asked to support that. I'm all for the health initiative and nutrition and don't smoke and don't want to smoke, but that would be a concern for me, and I guess I'd want to study it further before being asked officially to cast a vote in support of it.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I did what Kevin said. I'd like to know more before I pass judgment.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on, appreciate your comments and thoughts. Next item is Miracle League, and I think Dr. Hall has a few opening comments to make about that.
Some time ago, I think right before winter break, Eric Hughes, a community member, approached me with an idea that he was sharing with others about a concept called Miracle League, and more recently, we had a meeting, I had Kevin Gilmore attend, and we saw the video that we would like to share tonight, just to share this concept with you and then to see whether or not there's any board interest in us continuing any discussions about this, and rather than me defining what Miracle League is, I think the video kind of speaks for itself, and then I think we can go and take any questions or comments. Behind the podium right now is Jerry Rockhold, who is the coach you'll see in the video who started this. I think he has his son with him tonight, they were playing ball.
Matthew.
Matthew. And so I think we'll go ahead and show the video, and then if the board has questions for you, Jerry will, and Kevin may have some comments, we'll take a look at this. One of the things, I'm not sure we're going to be able to have time for the second video. I'm trying to recall, it's a great video, too. It's the local, it's a local Kansas City video of the effort, but wanted to have Kevin maybe fill in some comments here. One of the reasons we're showing this tonight is that there is some general community interest maybe in doing this here in Olathe. One of the opportunities that the school district might be involved in, or the city of Olathe, would maybe be to take a look, because we have land available to us, on whether or not a field like this could be placed on some school district land. It probably would be exciting to see it at ODAC or CEBEC where we have other athletic programs, and yet at the same time, we would not be in the business of operating it. So the city's also been approached about this. I can tell you, the Olathe Medical Center Board is making a commitment to help begin financial support for this kind of project. Mid-America Nazarene University has indicated support. So these preliminary discussions were going on, and we didn't want to, I think this was last week, we had this conversation, and so this was our first opportunity to kind of put this before the board, and Kevin, you want to add anything to that?
Well, I just, you know, we're known for our collaboration in a lot of different ways as a district, and there's a lot of energy developing around getting behind this. There already is across the country in various places, but here in Kansas City. And Jerry, where is it in North Kansas? Is it St. Joe?
Yeah, right now, there's already a project that's in the works at Liberty. We're partnering with William Jewel College, and we're already playing ball in Merriam at the backyard of Dream Factory Child. In fact, we're starting our fourth season just in a couple of weeks here, so.
And where's, you know, I'm struck by some of the comments in the video of these kids are unable to do what most kids take for granted. I've coached a baseball team for years, my boys have all played ball, and I know what it's like, and Lauren just wants to get to live out her dream of playing baseball, and there's lots of kids that we would like to help make that dream come true. And I, as I said in the meeting, I think there's lots of synergy, not just for the Olathe community, but for surrounding communities that will get involved in this. If we just put a little of our energy behind it, the city is, the Parks and Rec Department, other organizations, Olathe Medical Center, I know MNU took up the challenge once they heard William Jewel. Since that's my alma mater, I think that's a great thing.
We haven't gone anywhere in the last 18 months that we haven't been received, and there's a list along with what Dr. Hall said of people with support, including the Greater YMCA, including the Greater Kansas City Community Fund, just on and on.
So we, I guess we're just looking for an indication of willingness to continue to pursue this dialogue as we look at what we might be able to bring to the table as an organization and collaboratively with all the others in the community.
One quick question, that second video, and I know you guys are pressed for time, is about 60 seconds. Do you think it will show locally?
Oh, you, okay, I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
This one was a little longer.
It's a Channel 9 news piece they did on us last fall, so yeah.
You convinced us, let's do it.
Okay, great. No pressure, Finn, okay.
It is good.
I think one of the things that I want to be able to find out from the board is whether there's any interest in my continuing with staff to look and work as a collaborative team with others in the community to see what we can kind of develop here, not, there's no action, there's no plan, there's no business plan on this yet at this point. It's sort of getting those community players together to see whether or not we could make some kind of proposal go forward and then bring it back to various entities, and then also what kind of community on the private end of fundraising would be available to raise the dollars for a facility like this. I think that the conversation among some of the business people in the community is to make it, you know, a first-class facility, something we can be proud of, something that would be a destination for Olathe and would be a place where parents and kids who, family members who utilize it can be proud to go there and know that it's at the standard that other children have as an opportunity in athletics.
My answer is yes.
I'd be supportive of that as well.
Okay, and we bring back additional information, and we're looking at, I can't remember, I think, how many acres are we talking about for?
Approximately two.
Two acres. So we're looking to see, and the city's looking to see, if there's an appropriate location, we'd have some options, and we'd come back with some more information on that.
Want to thank the board for their time and consideration.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, men.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to Elementary International Language Program, please. Dr. Matikowski?
Dr. Drummond, members of the board, I wonder if I might ask for some indulgence to switch to the presentation on Avid. Two of our presenters have other school obligations that need to take off in a little while, and we'd like to include them in that presentation if that would be all right with you. Thank you very much. So we'll just make a quick little switch here. Thank you very much, and I appreciate that opportunity, and as I know, our presenters will as well as they switch around here a little bit. We're going to talk a little bit more this evening about advancing academic excellence, and surely you know that is a topic for us, has been a topic for us all year, and we're continuing that discussion this evening. As you remember from the community conversation, which, just to highlight and throw that sheet up there again, we had a lot of input from our parents and our community and our staff, and one of the areas that they talked about was acceleration and enrichment, and that's been very important to us. And that is why some of the target goals that you saw before you that we presented way back in February talked about how we could accelerate and enrich students, especially those in the middle and at the top. As we look at it, one of our target goals is to increase access for advanced curriculum, opportunities for students at all levels, especially for student, underrepresented students. And you can see the list of students there on the screen or on your screen that talk about the students that are currently sometimes underrepresented in some of our advanced curricular offerings. As you will hear later during our recognition time, we talk about the Kaufman Initiative for math and science. That is one of the goals of the Kaufman Initiative as well, to help us to increase underrepresented students' involvement in advanced and rigorous coursework, in that particular case, math and science. We certainly know that the research is very clear. If we are going to increase underrepresented students in advanced coursework, we have to have programs that highlight both high expectations but also high support, very important. We have many initiatives that we're doing in the district to help increase our underrepresented students' access to advanced curriculum. For example, we're looking at access data. We're looking at how all of our student groups are accessing things like advanced physics, advanced mathematics, advanced placement English. We certainly are looking at elementary math and science clubs for all students and encouraging students to participate in that. We're very proud to share with you tonight a pilot program that we're going to initiate next year that provides high support. The first person that's going to share with you some information about that program is Dr. Ann Sanders. Dr. Sanders has been instrumental in helping us to research and locate this program and is going to be instrumental as well as we implement this pilot and see if it is the right answer for Olathe students. Dr. Sanders?
Thank you very much. Avid stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. Avid actually comes from a Latin word that means avidus, which means to eagerly pursue, and in this case, we're going to be eagerly pursuing academic excellence for all students, especially those students in the middle. And when you hear the terms underachieving, underrepresented, these are students with high potential but who have, by their own means and sometimes by ours, they have not been discovered. They just go along day-to-day doing the right thing but not challenging themselves because they may not know the hidden curriculum for success. And the Avid program, we had an opportunity to begin over a year ago going and doing some research. Three members of the advance team, that was Dr. Poss, Dr. Gretchen Scherk, and I were given the privilege to go to California to begin our investigation of this program. And so when we heard it, we were so excited because it did talk about helping these students in the middle by helping them with academic instruction, support, tutorial support, and motivational activities. The mission of Avid is, especially as we have said, for those students who are in the middle, those students who are, sometimes we call them the bread and butter students, they just do what's right, but often, they don't challenge themselves academically. It is to give them this high support through an extra hour of a preparatory, college preparatory curriculum to be able to be successful. And we hope that they will be not only successful, and we've seen the research, that they'll enter the mainstream, and just like the miracle team, they'll become a part of the mainstream activities of their school, and that they will challenge themselves in academic curricula that is very, very rigorous. And then, of course, our ultimate goal, that they will become contributing members of our democratic society. One of the things that you need to know about Avid is that it began over 25 years ago, and it began by a classroom teacher, and then later was embraced by other educational research teams. And finally, the college board, which puts on the Advanced Placement Program, embraced, and they kind of married or joined hands in the year 2000. And now, over 90,000 students in the United States are involved in the Avid program in over 1,650 sites. And Wichita was the first district, public school district in Kansas, to adopt the Avid program. But other benchmark districts around the nation have adopted Avid, and the Western states benchmark consortium, and as we know, it is one of those districts or consortiums that we are benchmarking ourself against, and one of the members is Cherry Creek.
So what is, who is this student? This is a student with a 2.5 to 3.4 GPA. This is a student that has the desire, the potential, and the determination to succeed in college. This is a student that's willing to commit to doing homework every night, and this is a student willing to embrace and commit to a very rigorous academic program. We're going to select these students based upon their test scores, their GPA, attendance, teacher recommendations, that parent and student commitment, and also a student interview. Then there's a role of the parent. The parent must commit to attend some parent nights, some workshops, and they must commit to providing that home environment that supports some homework and high expectations for their student, and they also must commit to the Avid contract, which, you know, what that is, is that's the objectives, what we want that student to do, and when that student comes home at night and says, "I really don't want to do my homework, I want to go out with my friends," they're saying, "You're going to stay home and do your homework." So that's what we need from that parent.
What does Avid actually look like? Maybe some of the components, the nitty-gritty, the pieces of it that you want to really look at? Avid actually consists of an elective class to begin with, so students would replace that in their schedule with another elective class that they would be taking in our curriculum. In that class, you can see real quick, just listed some things that are already proven effective teaching strategies. They use the acronym WICRA to describe that, and they have the writing piece, inquiry, collaboration, and reading. The collaboration piece is definitely manifested in the tutorials, which is a tutoring program that happens both individually and in groups during an hour or two of that Avid elective class during the week. They have tutors, personal tutors, that come in either from universities, colleges, and even have the option of other teachers that help out in that tutoring session to help along that success of the student in that Avid elective class. class.
Avid has a 25-year history, and we had the advantage of being able to look at the success that other schools have had for their students in implementing Avid. And we found that students are more likely to go to college who have participated in the Avid program, more likely to stay in college, more likely to succeed with good grades in college. 93% of the students who complete the Avid program go on to college. That's about double the rate for a peer group. 70% of those students, 70% of students in the Avid program enroll in a four-year institution, right out of high school. And we saw that the data was especially strong for students of low socioeconomic status, African-American students, and Hispanic students. So we saw that it was a close match to our goal in closing achievement gaps for all students in our district.
Beyond the codified research that the program has and what we had done, we began our own research in only the Olathe way. And that began, as you can see in this timeline, over a year ago. And it began in April 2005. We had the opportunity to go to begin our investigation of Avid. We'd been reading about Avid, and it seemed to pop up, like when you learn a new word, to see Avid everywhere in literature about helping students in the middle. And so we had an opportunity to go to San Diego and to begin our investigation through a conference. Then in June, we had an opportunity to send two of our junior high administrators, because the first three, we were so enthusiastic about it. We thought, well, let's see if anybody else can catch this kind of fever, and also underscore the potential and the possibilities and the promise of this program. And so we sent two junior high administrators, and they went to the Full Week Institute, and they came back equally excited about the promise of this particular program. In September of this year, we had a secondary principals' meeting on academic excellence. And as a part of that, we invited the Avid team from Wichita here. And we also had students who were currently in the Avid program, and they did a simulation of the tutorial. And the entire secondary administrative team became very excited about the potential, because it was that critical thinking, that, those questioning skills, the cognitive coaching that we saw. The Avid Regional Director came, and we asked and quizzed him over various aspects of the program. And then in January 2006 of this year, we asked the secondary schools, would they be willing to pilot the program? And there were submission of pilot applications. Of all of the secondary schools, every person showed some sort of interest in Avid, and said they thought it was a really good program that should come to the Olathe Schools District. Four sites were selected in January, and then in February, 25 Olathe staff descended upon Wichita and went to their middle schools, as well as the high school, that is the demonstration site. In April, we decided that we needed a little bit of further investigation by going to the Benchmark District in Cherry Creek, which mirrors our demographics. And once again, we were totally impressed. We were in a school of about 3,500, and we had an opportunity to visit face-to-face with those persons who were believers in the Avid program, and they were able to show us their academic achievement for those students in the middle. Here in May, we are sending more of our Olathe staff down to Wichita to view, and to see, and to ask questions. And our district curriculum coordinators are excited about going. This summer, all four of the sites who have been selected will attend an Avid week-long institute.
As we look at the implementation of Avid in our district, as Dr. Sanders says, four pilot schools have been selected, and they are on the screen for you. There are two junior highs, two senior highs. And we want to take a careful look at it. We have an evaluation process that will be put in place, so that we can examine if this is a good program for our students here in Olathe, and to help us increase our underrepresented students taking advantage of advanced and rigorous curriculum. I want to highlight just a moment the funding source. The predominant funding source for the entire implementation of Avid for next year is our Kaufman Grant. And we're very excited about that. It's going to help us pay for the Avid fees, and part of that fee is really to go for all this intensive training that our teachers need to go through, as well as it's going to help pay for some AP study sessions in math and science. So we're very pleased how much the Kaufman Grant is going to do for us in this area. In conclusion, Avid is, you saw the title, it's a new acronym for us to learn, and it is not a remedial program. It is an academic support program to prepare students for college entrance and college success. So that's going to be very important, as we take a look at how Avid is implemented in our district. As we look at it, it's a multifaceted solutions that are needed if we're going to increase our underrepresented students taking advantage of rigorous advanced curriculum. Certain, the rigor, relevance, and relationships are going to be critical. As we have a vision into the future, what's it going to look like after next year? And we hope that this pilot and the next year's may be advancing those pilots, you know, increasing the number of students that are so successful in accelerated curriculum. That's our excitement, at all levels, elementary, junior high, senior high. And the Avid program is hopefully going to help us to do that at the junior and senior high level. We're going to end with a little bit of a quote, and we think it's a quote that's been very important for us, especially as we were even talking about the whole Kaufman Grant, that how important for us that we're going to do a little ripple of hope for students who may not have even thought that they could go to college. And we're going to help them to have that high expectation for themselves, through our high expectations for them, but a lot of high support to make that happen. So that little ripple of hope is going to make a difference for us as we move forward with our students. We're very excited, and I use a phrase that Dr. Sanders used, there's sometimes students are a diamond in the rough, and we're going to help polish them up. So with that, we would stand ready for any questions that you may have, or comments that you might have about us implementing and piloting the Avid program.
Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it. Excellent report. Questions, comments?
One thing I want to mention, I believe several of our board members, when we were at the National School Boards Association meetings this spring, attended some sessions. I think Rita, you did, Kevin, and Harlan. And so they may have some comments about this as well.
We saw, part of what we saw at that session was a video presentation, and you probably have seen it, too, a news clip of some sort.
Yes, excellent news clip.
But what struck me about that was an advanced placement teacher who got drug into this, basically, kicking and screaming, saying, this is never going to work. And she's the biggest proponent of the program, now that there ever is. And that really struck me.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they, she had a mindset, which is easy to get to if you're not careful, that these kids can't do that. But they can do that, if they're challenged, and if they're given the opportunity. And that's what's exciting about this program.
The portion that captures my interest here is, you hear the word discovery. I heard that in a presentation today. And I've always been somewhat intrigued by the fact that we expect our, our children, when they get into high school, and they're getting ready to go to college, to have their whole life figured out. And there's a lot of, a lot of children that don't. And so this is exciting from that perspective. I think anything that we can do to cultivate what it is that these children want to do going forward, you know, so I've been out at Olathe Northwest, I've seen Avid already in the hallway with some of the, some of the things going on out there. So I think this is a great program.
I definitely like this idea. And I think one of the exciting things about the idea is that hopefully it would be contagious, because peer pressure.
We're hoping for it.
Encourages students to do things that maybe they previously hadn't thought that they could do. So I think implementing this program, and hopefully we will have the opportunity to do this district-wide at some point in time. But I think that just the idea of being contagious and the ripples in the water here would.
That's right.
You know, be synonymous with that. But I have a challenge for you. I'm looking at one of these slides here that shows the proof of success, and it says, the data is especially strong for low socioeconomic students, African-American students, and Hispanic students. And there's one school that's not included in the pilot program, schools that are listed here, that I think their student population reflects all three of these groups, and that is Olathe North. And I would very much encourage you to consider adding Olathe North to the pool of schools for the pilot program next year.
We certainly had more schools applied than we selected for the amount of money that we had available from the Kaufman Initiative. So while other schools, and of course, pilots also, we try not to be too broad, so we can get a scope for that and for our district, there are other schools, both junior high and senior highs, that have student populations that would probably benefit from Avid. It is on our district initiative sheet to add additional pilots. So we'll have to kind of see where they're, where we go with that. We are fortunate, we have a couple of schools that are actually attending the training, because you have to attend the training in order to be implementing. And the other two of our high schools are participating in the training, so they could be added as soon as we know more funding information. So an opportunity for you to also have that challenge, as you look at budget initiatives.
It's interesting. As I was sitting here, listening to the presentation, the very comments that Ms. Ashley brought up about Olathe North came to my mind. And I would wholeheartedly second that, particularly as we look at the key attributes that this program targets. It would be my desire, Dr. All, that we find a way to also incorporate this into Olathe North. I think it's an excellent suggestion.
And we also have, I think, another junior high that could also profit by their student population.
We, I think we have opportunities here, and we're going to do our best to promote the academic excellence part. We've talked about this, that, that we're going to bring excellence in Olathe to every child. And I think we've done a very good job, and I think this program is going to take us to a new level. And appreciate the comments to mine on the board, and the staff's part, and the staff's work. And I promise you, there's enough commitment here, and research, and focus, that we're going to make this work and work well for our kids. I am a little nervous about the clock up there, so I'm just reminding the president.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'll be quick, just because of the clock, and that would be, how many students will be impacted by the program initially, that you're talking about?
We have begun to identify students, and we're looking at anywhere from 20 to 30 to begin. And we, the research says, begin small and build capacity. And so, and I'd also add, with the comments that were made about some of the schools and the demographics, is that we also want to be, and we're very cognizant of the fact that there were a lot of programs already in place at Olathe North. And so we wanted to give them an opportunity in some of these others, to work out any of the problems that we might have, and to refine that, so that if it was what we think it will be, we would be able to move forward with great speed.
Other question would be, you would be probably training the teachers, and then would these teachers train other teachers? I'm assuming that you would use that model you've used so well in Olathe already. Third question would be, if you're looking at costs, I know the Kaufman Foundation is the support for that right now. If you look long-term, and I know that that's on our budget, that you're already talking about, for us to look at, but long-term, is this a program that if we find, we probably can sustain through these funds, and then funds that will come in future?
And I think, whenever you implement something with grant funding, implementation and sustainability is very important. And sustainability, we'll have to talk about where it fits in our priority. But I think we are driven by our goal of closing. We have narrowed the achievement gap, but we want to close the achievement gap. And to do that will require us to take a look, a hard look at what we prioritize for funding. So I think over the time, if we find it to be successful, we'll have to ask that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it. Given the time of the hour, I would suggest that we delay our break, and delay our next item, Elementary International Language Program, and move right on to recognitions and awards. That would get us back on task. We have people here waiting to be honored by us. And then public comments, and we'll take a break, and then come back to the international language, if that's okay with everybody.
Do you want that before or after awards? Because the awards are here at 6:45. You want the awards first, so they can, or?
Right. Recognizations and awards right now.
I'm not sure how long the international language is.
It may be out in the hall, too. Some of the recognitions are probably out in the hall.
Oh, they're out in the hall. Yeah.
So we're not quite ready for that yet.
How long is international language?
Dr. All, I think we need to wait on international language. There's many things to discuss on that, so.
Okay.